Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council Meeting on Tuesday, June 3, 2025. If you'd all please rise for a moment's silence, all by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This hour, could you please call roll?
Head.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Harkar.
Present.
Dixon.
Present.
Brown.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
President Potter.
Present.
Mr. President, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Brown for filling in for me last week. I think he did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
And I'll piggyback off that. I also saw the video and think you did a very nice job as well, so, thank you. Moving on, we have the approval of the minutes, which we've got four. The May 13, 2025 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes, the May 20, 2025 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, the May 27 Agenda and Special Meeting Minutes, as well as the May 27, 2025 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dixon, seconded by Ms. Harkar, the approval of minutes, straight discussion. Ms. Og, please call roll.
Head.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. At this time, Mayor Bevins would like to make a special presentation for Pride Month.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. How's everyone this evening?
Good.
Good, good. I have a proclamation from the office of the mayor that reads, whereas the city of Whitehall supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas the city of Whitehall recognizes and honors the contributions, resilience, and history of the LGBTQ+ community, acknowledging their rich cultural heritage and the vital impact they have made in our city and beyond, and whereas Pride Month is celebrated each June to commemorate the Stonewall riots of 1969, a pivotal moment in the fight for LGBTQ+ rights, and to honor the ongoing struggle for equality, justice, and acceptance for all people regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and whereas the 2025 national theme for Pride Month, Reflect, Empower, Unite, encourages us to reflect on the progress that has been made to empower the voices and experiences of LGBTQ+ individuals and to unite in solidarity to ensure dignity, equity, and inclusion for all, and whereas the city of Whitehall values diversity and inclusion as core principles and remains committed to fostering a welcoming, safe, and supporting environment for all residents, including those who identify as LGBTQ+, and whereas Pride Month provides an opportunity for all members of our community to celebrate the strength and contributions of the LGBTQ+ community and to reaffirm our shared commitment to standing against discrimination, prejudice, and hate in all forms. Now therefore, I, Michael T. Bevins, Mayor of the city of Whitehall, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month in Whitehall. I urge all residents to join in celebrating the diversity and contributions of the LGBTQ+ community and to participate in events and activities that promote understanding, acceptance, and equality for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on to our standard committee reports, starting off with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met last week. We have several pieces of legislation on the agenda this evening, and our minutes are on file. We will meet again next Tuesday, 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harkar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week. We have no drafts for pending legislation. We'll meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards and Enforcement also met last week. That's Ordinance 37, 2025. That will go to the Planning Commission on June 16 for consideration, which we will vote on the next meeting on the 17th. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next week.
Very good. Appreciate that. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We will meet again in these chambers next week sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Infrastructure, Maintenance, and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure, Maintenance, and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we plan to meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Very good. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week. Councilor Elmore sit in for me in my absence. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Very good. And that brings us to Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Head.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. Thank you, Councilwoman Elmore, for covering for me in my absence. We will meet again next, this coming Tuesday sometime after 6:30, and we also have no legislation on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. This brings us on to official reports. Mayor Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and everyone that's here this evening. I do have a few things to mention from my office. One, I would like to just reiterate and thank President of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners, Erica Crawley, for coming last Wednesday and doing her conversations with Crawley in our city hall. I want to reiterate, that was the very first time that the Franklin County Commissioners have used a municipal building for that purpose. I thought it was a fantastic showing. A lot of our agencies that receive grants and receive funding from the county were present. They were able to get one-on-one face time with Commissioner Crawley, as well as residents that showed up to actually speak with her personally as it relates to the agenda. And the reason why that's significant for our city is, one, I had encouraged members of council to review the Franklin County Poverty Blueprint, as well as join in in a lot of the efforts from the county. They are a $2.2 billion agency that invests in Franklin County. Their motto is "Every Resident, Every Day," and the fact that they chose Whitehall to invest that time, especially with our poverty rate, not just for adults, but also for our children, was significant. So I want to thank her personally, and I want to thank every single member of the community that came out and participated. Next, as you know, since May 20, the city of Whitehall has experienced an environmental issue as it relates to the oil spill from the GFL refinery. I have gone out and been a part of the Joint Unified Command, which includes GFL Refinery, which includes the United States EPA, Franklin County EPA, Franklin County EMA, as well as the Defense Logistics Agency. They are also a part of it. But I want to assure, at least from everything that I've been able to do as mayor, to convey information, as well as make suggestions, that the evidence that supports any harmful substances to the air has been at least coming out zeros. And I want to be very clear with that so that our residents know, just recently, and it's done in two parts. It's done with air sampling and air monitoring. And I know it sounds the same, but sampling is actually sampling what is in the air. And there are nine locations right now in the city of Whitehall, so if you see these canisters on either banisters or on poles, they're very small, but they have a sign on them that say, "This is for air sampling." And I'll tell you the location so you have that for your records. One is on Roosevelt Avenue near DSCC. One is at 3364 to 3398 Allegheny Avenue. The next is 310 North Yearling. The next is 4140 East Broad Street. The other is 455 Beechwood Road. The other is 730 Collingwood Avenue. The next is 3688 East Livingston Avenue. The other is 2256 Court Right Road. And the last one is 4001 Refugee Road. And as of today, all zeros and volatile organic compounds, benzene, LELs, which is combustibles, which just means lower explosive limit, and oxygen is consistent with ambient air. So the oxygen that they're finding in the samples from pulling that is consistent with ambient air. So at least for purposes of any residents that live in or near those areas, there are no harmful substances that are being detected in the canisters that are in the area, which is just fantastic news. I was able to meet with some residents in the area as far as what they've seen for wildlife, and I am constantly monitoring whether or not there will be harmful effects to the ground areas near the creeks, because there are a lot of residents that have gardens near the creek, and that's significant, and they should be concerned. But we are monitoring, and soon, GFL intends to put up an 877 number for any residents that would have any questions, and they're creating door hangers. We have agreed to put the city logo on it, but it will be a GFL, a GFL door hanger for any residents that would have any questions or concerns, but they would be able to get those answered from GFL. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you had anything based upon that. And then, next, we have our Fishing with Dad that's coming up. We have also, I have a list for youth homelessness. I know I made a comment about our youth homeless situation and the fact that 73% of our school age children are at or below the poverty level. And so I have a list that if you just want to donate, top four things, toilet paper, paper towels, soap, and deodorant. I also have an address on this list for where you could make those donations, but it would definitely help. And this address is significant because I've visited this homeless shelter, and there are several Whitehall homeless youth that actually live there and go to school in the city of Whitehall. So you would be making a direct contribution that could benefit a homeless youth from the city of Whitehall. Next.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Could you see if that could get posted on our website?
I sure can, yeah. And I have that here, and I will get that posted on the website as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, was able to attend with Councilmember Harkar, and I'm sure she was impacted just as much as I was. Strive for you, and I want to thank Cory Ollie and Shannon Brady for bringing this program to the city of Whitehall. The Strive for You is a disabled veterans organization that strives to introduce them to athletic activities from archery to rifle shooting to a whole bunch of
Disc golf.
Disc golf, kickball. They even challenged us for the kickball tournament that Friday, but we got rained out. I had a sneaky suspicion that it was going to be a ringer type situation, so maybe the rain saved us. But I was able to meet Major John Turnbull, who was just an absolute hero. He is a West Point grad that went into the military and actually lost both of his eyes, lost both of his eyes as it related to a coward in Syria, which was a suicide bomber. And his attitude and comedic banter as it relates to it was just phenomenal, was just a hero, and definitely lets you know how privileged we are to live in this country and to be Americans. He was just a, he is just a fantastic man to meet. And then, last, well, I have one last because I just saw something that I have to point out, but I would like to welcome our new Economic Development Director, Jackie Russell, and she will get an opportunity to speak at some point, but I just want to welcome you to the city of Whitehall. But last, I did, and I hope this doesn't put her on the spot, I did see this shirt that one of our beautiful residents, Diane Peters, is wearing this evening from the Senior Center, and I'm feeling some kind of way because on the back of it, it has a volleyball on it with fire around it. And I saw that T-shirt, and madam, we have a new Economic Development Director, and the administrative staff is getting back to full force, so challenge accepted. So I see you, and I appreciate you, and we're coming back to the Senior Center soon. So, thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President, I just have a question.
Sure.
You'd asked if we had a question. I was just, my question has to do with water quality. Have they been testing the water, and if so, what is the outcome?
No, the main, no, great question. The main concern regarding water quality now is just the abatement of the sludge and the oil. So they'll get to that. That's a part of it, but in the process now, their main concern is removal of the product from the actual waterway. The things that we've been experiencing with respect to the rain is the water levels have increased, and then we have the secondary issues of, what I'm being told, and I've learned so much about this, it's pretty phenomenal, but I guess the oil will pool itself and gather under the rocks. So there will be a time, once the water lowers, that they will go out, and then they will do a complete flushing of the creek with soap at some point, once they get to that point, and then they will test water quality after they get all of that. So it's, we're in this for several weeks, if not months, before this is completely abated and they say all clear, but they are definitely now in the creeks. They are speaking to residents along the creek bed because they, some residents will see them in their backyards as they're looking and trying to find product, and there's nothing to be alarmed there. They're doing their job to abate the oil from the creek system.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you. That will bring us on to City Attorney Nick Ademas.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've seen drone video on Facebook, but I still haven't received my invitation to learn how to fly it yet, so I'm waiting on that. On a more serious note, question's been out there with regards to the motions to reconsider ordinances 9, 10, and 11, and how that works in this process, and what needs to occur, and can it be done? And initially, we talked about, okay, we have this law, and then a referendum, and then the motion to reconsider, and how does everything affect everything? And it seemed daunting, but when you sit down and break it apart, as sometimes we have to do, and looked at it, the answer actually became relatively simple. Council can't reconsider these ordinances because the moment the mayor signed them, they became an acted law. Using a federal legislation thing, they were enrolled bills. So council's only options at that point would be to rescind them or to amend them with future ordinances, but council cannot reconsider those ordinances because they are law, once the mayor signed them, and they were all signed that same night. So my preference and recommendation for council action would be, when they become untabled tonight, if Ms. Elmore is the one who made the motion to reconsider, would withdraw the motion. If no one objects to that, then they come off the agenda, and it's done.
I do have a question with regards to that.
Yeah.
The motion passed with four, so it wasn't an emergency. For emergency, it goes right into law. However, if it not be in that, you have 30 days, and then it's enacted.
That's why I said it's an enacted law, not a law in effect.
Okay.
So, and there's a difference. So it became, it's still the law, it's just not enacted yet. So, and sometimes we use those words interchangeably, especially with like emergency declarations. It's enacted, it also means it's effective. But in this case, there is that wait period, but it was a, they validly passed ordinance by council. The mayor signed off on it that night, so, because the charter gives, and state law gives, time to consider those, and mayors had vetoes and stuff like that. None of that occurred. It was approved, so it became enacted. So council cannot reconsider those ordinances. Like I said, you could rescind them or amend them with future ordinances, but you can't reconsider 9, 10, and 11.
Another question. What happens to the date that we gave the developer to come back to us? That date still remains the same?
Well, so you still have your council abilities to, if the developer brings you more information, you can choose to, again, rescind those ordinances and pass new ones or amend them based on what the developer provides you. But it can't be with regards to ordinances 9, 10, and 11 on a reconsideration.
But to be clear, too, I mean, when you're talking
Could you speak up a little bit higher?
Could you look at us when you're talking? We can't hear you. So they can hear your voice, they don't know why they're coming out this way.
I can appreciate that, but they're the ones that need to hear my opinion.
We don't.
So with that, just so that I understand it correct, I mean, to amend ordinances, I mean, these are financial incentives, so even if the developer came with new information, whatever, it would be us trying to amend financial incentives, not the actual part of the cell, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's all I have on that. Again, I know during Agenda, there was discussion of untabling it, so if Ms. Elmore's willing tonight to make that motion to withdraw those, the procedure that is, is because it's her motion, if she withdraws it, if there's no objection, they're withdrawn, and it's over. If anybody on council objects to the withdrawal, it would proceed to a vote, and it's a simple majority.
What, what, not the question. Once the reconsideration is withdrawn, what happens, what's the process now? What happens now, or what has the potential to occur?
With regards to what?
With regard to this legislation, it's still 617, correct?
No, if you withdraw it, it comes off the agenda. There's no future action on it. The next action would be the referendum in November, assuming the developer doesn't bring something and council decides to repeal or amend it. But, but
So my question is, why would we withdraw the reconsideration, given the June 17, they asked for 30 days? Why would we withdraw the reconsideration prior to what we approved already, what they requested?
Because even if they come on June 17, or you wait until June 17, you can't, you can't have another vote on these ordinances. So even if they come with new information, can't vote on these. You have to, again, either repeal and replace it with a new ordinance or amend them, but you can't vote on ordinances 9, 10, and 11 again with that new information. So it, I don't know that it matters one way or the other. The developer can still bring you additional information, but it has to be separate legislation than this.
Again, my question is, why would we prematurely withdraw a motion to reconsider, recognizing we gave them 30 days? Even in line with the fact that it's already law, you know, that's been enacted?
Again, I don't know that it's withdrawing it prematurely because council cannot take action on it.
Correct, until, until the developer comes
No, even if they were to get a whole new program, there's nothing we can do.
Yeah, you cannot, you cannot take a new vote on these ordinances. If you want to change anything, you have to amend them
That'd be a really process.
Or repeal them and replace them with a whole new ordinance. So that's why I say it's not premature to withdraw, because no action can be taken on this. Any other questions?
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, no, thank you. I know that was obviously something we were trying to figure out, so.
No, I got it. There's nothing to do with this.
Yeah, it's, we've done a lot of things that aren't exactly always clear, you know, clear as mud these days, so, but if questions pop up between now and when these ordinance come up, I'm always happy to answer them. And that's all I have.
Okay. I appreciate that. That brings us to Auditor Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Our external auditors, Julian and Groob, are in this week. They are, they arrived this morning, and they will be here Wednesday, Thursday, and they have promised me that it is not going to take them 11 months to get to the report, so I'm excited to hear that. And other than that, I just ask for favorable consideration on ordinances 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 2025, and Resolution 22, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Quinzel. Director of Public Service, Rawlins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much for you this evening. I just want to give folks an update. They may see some changes along Yearling Road. The service team is trying to get away from traditional flags that we've hung on Yearling Road, and we're moving over to pole banners. We've seen a lot of damage, both vandalism, people tearing down flags, trucks tearing down flags, so the maintenance cost and the replacement labor has gotten excessive. So we are trying to move towards pole banners. A lot of different communities are using pole banners. If you notice, May, we had our Whitehall Yearling Seniors along Yearling Road. My crew is out, I think, Thursday or Friday this week, putting up our pride banners for the month of June, and then we'll move into independence banners for the month of July. Still working out what all the rest of the months look like, but we're just kind of doing them in small groups, and hopefully each month we'll have something different. So I just wanted to give you guys that update. So things may look a little different, we're just changing it up, maybe a little spicier. Other than that, asking for favorable consideration for ordinance 050, 2025. Thank you.
And I thank you. Director of Public Safety, Greg is not with us this evening. That brings us to Treasurer Aljammer.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I do not have an official report, just want to apologize for my tardiness, that it is good to be back with you all, and that is all I have.
Thank you. There have been no official reports filed in the council office since our last meeting. Same holds true with Communications, Petitions, and Claims.
Mr. President Potter?
Do you recognize economic development?
Oh, I'm sorry, she was not on my
I'm sorry, she didn't make the list.
She probably wasn't prepared to hit you there. Yeah.
Well, fantastic. As the mayor has said, Jackie Russell, new Economic Development Director, super excited to be here and join this community. It's a lot that I see, a lot of great opportunity with great people, including great residents, so I'm excited to serve you all, be able to help the mayor complete all of his great visions that he has. I'm coming from the city of DuAlpine, where I've spent the past nine years. I worked over on over $40 billion in investment there in private projects during my time. I'm excited to bring that expertise to the table and be able to help us continue to do something special here.
Welcome.
Thank you, and welcome. As I mentioned, there's been no Communications, Petitions, or Claims filed in the council office since our last meeting. This is our first poll public, and just quickly to go over the rules, I think who is welcome to come forward. Just need to state your name, use our sign-in sheet, and you've got three minutes. So if anybody would like to come forward, I'd invite them to come at this time. Ed, did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. State your name.
My name is Patricia Bull, sir. Good afternoon, council, administration, mayor. As you know, that we've been very upset about the reconsideration you're allowing against the charter, and I think maybe we can come to terms with it tonight. I believe that our city attorney has made it very clear that our petition to get this on the ballot was very clear, lawful, and we did everything that we needed to do. As I collected the signatures, when I can get up to 400 signatures in 10 days, I'm easily encouraged to speak out. After listening to Whitehall citizens, they have a lot of questions, and I think we fell short in answering those questions, and I tried to do my best to answer them for them while I was doing the petition. There are a few things I want to just mention that I hope we can get on to. Of course, the number one thing was the roads, but, you know, I see that, that we're making progress on that. The next thing was, what about the other projects that we got going on? Rockwell, North Crossing, Yearling, Worthman's, can we please be transparent about where those are at? What's our tax dollars? I believe that, what are their contracts with the city? And I believe that we're paying some bonds on the land. A lot of people really want to know about those items. They want to know where we're with all this development. Now we're talking about development. What are we doing with it? Also, how are we going to handle our schools with all these people coming in? Our schools are, this is what people were telling me as they signed the, you know, they had a lot to say. They wanted to know what's going on with the schools. How are we going to accommodate all the students? So I, we received some information that was public, that was made in tax. So, um, I, we got, we received some information that was public, that was made in text. And, uh, one of them said that I put a, a Facebook out that we're protesting Whitehall City Council. And the answer was, it never stops. And the answer to that was, no, it does not. And it will not, when I have people behind me, a lot of people behind me, that agree to what I am saying. I also like to read another text, I believe this is from Mike, M.S. It says, Mike, I've been reading again, and I think that the G one shuts down making a motion because it's clearly against our rules. Section two does not address this as that states any other subjects. Further, in researching Robert's Rule of Order, think they only kick in if we do not have specific language. And in this case, we do, to address such situations. I think the only way to get this reconsidered is if the rules of council change to allow items to be reconsidered with a different timeframe. I want to tell you this was, this was put out before the council meeting on May seventh at two thirty-nine. People were aware of this, they were aware that the reconsideration goes against our charter. And I think we need to honor that tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you. You signed in?
Yes.
And just state your name, please.
Amanda Waller.
Thank you.
I didn't know anything about motions to reconsider before, you know, a month ago, but I did do it, tried to do a deep dive on it the last couple of weeks. And, and here's what I learned, um, it appears that council actually does have very broad powers to reconsider any vote or decision that they've taken. Except the caveat being that, um, if the rights of others become vested since then. So the moment the clerk of council certified the referendum petition, that then referred the ordinances, um, to, you know, a special election or a ballot. And the, you know, constitutional right of referendum of the electors of the city becomes vested. And so at that point, it's my understanding that council cannot rescind or amend an emotive, uh, sustained ordinances, right? Because they've now been, not under their power anymore there. So the timing just happened to work out that, you know, in succession, right? But, you know, you, um, the developer, you, you requested it as early as you could and, and you guys, you know, motion for it as early as you could. But the petitions were certified ahead of that, so I think it was just a matter of timing. And, you know, the petitioners worked diligently to, you know, ensure their petitions were, um, ready. And I think, yeah, it's just a matter of timing. And I do think that the developer, you know, he has a couple of months now to, you know, convince the electors of the city that, you know, if option B is worth it, or option C, or whatever his new thinking plans are, that, you know, he has time to convince the electors of that as well, right? Because it will be voted on, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Holly Stein, I have some news.
Thank you.
So, um, today I want to really talk about two points. And I'm going to read from a letter that each of you got, because I sent it to you on Wednesday, the twenty-first. And it's titled, Rescind the Approval of the Motion to Reconsider on the Ordinances Nine, Ten, and Eleven. The actions that Whitehall City Council took on May seventh violated the Council of City of Whitehall Rules of Procedure. The content of that says, under motion, under motions to reconsider, G point one. A motion to reconsider a subject that may have been acted upon favorably by council must be made before the adjournment of that session of council. Point one says, in plain reading, that it means those ordinances, and they were acted upon favorably, they were approved, and it was passed on that meeting of May seventh. The next part kicks in, a motion to reconsider must be made before the adjournment of that session of council. Notice the word must, that means that there is no equivocation on that. We believe that the purpose of why you were going through a motion to reconsider is a violation, is because it disrupts the path of the referendum petitions that were found to be on, to be sufficient on that morning of May seventh. And to prevent them from having their due course by the electors on, on November seventh at the twenty-twenty-five general election. And you're trying to find alternative solutions to preventing this lawful action from occurring. And this was a letter that was sent to each of you and said respectfully, we ask you to, to reconsider that. You have not done that, that was May twenty-first. So today, each of you received the letter via Taft Law with myself as the representative. It has a injunction request under Whitehall Charter, section thirty-five. I'm not going to read it to you because you all received it, but I am going to read one important part. And it says, in an apparent attempt to circumvent the petitions and deny the citizens of Whitehall their referendum rights, city council has approved motions to reconsider these ordinances. You are demanded by your own charter that you cannot do this. You violated your own rules of procedure and you know it. You were even given notice of that by your own city attorney. And if you continue to refuse to retract this, you will be under an injunction order to do so.
Does anybody else wish to come forward? Seeing nobody, we will move on. Ms. Ald, would you please call Roll onto whether each member of the council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes, thank you.
We've got reconsidered ordinances, um, ordinance nine, twenty-twenty-five, which has been tabled until six seventeen, twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to untable ordinance nine, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. It's a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison to untable ordinance nine, twenty-twenty-five, is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ald, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm going to withdraw the reconsideration.
Well, we need to first untable it.
Okay.
So if you'd please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance nine, twenty-twenty-five has been untabled.
Okay, now I will make a, um, motion to withdraw the reconsideration based upon the city attorney's explanation.
Thank you.
Do you need a second for that?
No, this is, unless there's anybody in opposition to that, and I'm not seeing anybody, so the motion to withdraw has been accepted. Ordinance nine, twenty-twenty-five has been withdrawn. Ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five is tabled until six seventeen, twenty-twenty-five.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to untable ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. A motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison to untable ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five has been untabled.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to withdraw the reconsideration for ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there anyone in opposition? Seeing none, ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five has been withdrawn. Brings us to ordinance eleven, twenty-twenty-five, uh, which has been tabled until six seventeen, twenty-twenty-five.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to untable ordinance eleven, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. Motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison to untable ordinance eleven, twenty-twenty-five, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance eleven, twenty-twenty-five has been untabled.
And Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to withdraw the reconsideration on ordinance eleven, twenty-twenty-five.
There's been a motion to withdraw by Ms. Elmore, who, sorry, is there any opposition? Seeing none, ordinance eleven, twenty-twenty-five has been withdrawn. This now brings us to our third reading, and it's ordinance thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-five. This will need to be a tabled until six seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, so it can go to the public hearing of planning commission on June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. I'll need to have a motion, Ms. Smith.
I would like to introduce a motion to table ordinance thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Dixon to table ordinance thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-five until six seventeen, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-five has been tabled until six seventeen. Under second reading, we have ordinance forty, twenty-twenty-five, which will be read by title only. Authorizing the adoption of the May twenty-twenty-five replacement pages to the codified ordinance of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency. Also being read by title only is ordinance forty-two, twenty-twenty-five, which was referred to committee of the whole by myself on May twentieth. And we'll be having a public hearing at planning commission, uh, which is scheduled for June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. This now brings us to our first readings, we have ordinance fifty, twenty-twenty-five. Authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from unappropriate monies at the general fund one oh one to the fleet reserve and maintenance fund three thirteen.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty, twenty-twenty-five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith to introduce ordinance fifty, twenty-twenty-five with suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance fifty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Approving and making a subsequent appropriation in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from previously unappropriate monies in the recreation trust fund eight sixty to the recreation trust fund expense account eight sixty point zero 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 point fifty-one thousand and declaring, no, not declaring an emergency, but, uh.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-one, twenty-twenty-five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith to introduce ordinance fifty-one, twenty-twenty-five and for the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-one, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance fifty-two, twenty-twenty-five. Authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars from unappropriate monies in the evidence set aside fund two forty-five to law enforcement trust fund two forty-four, two forty-one, making a subsequent appropriation in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars from unappropriate funds in the law enforcement trust fund two forty-one to law enforcement trust fund expense account two forty-one point zero 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 point fifty thousand.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-two, twenty-twenty-five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harcar to introduce ordinance fifty-two, twenty-twenty-five and for the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harcar, any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-two, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-three, twenty-twenty-five. Authorizing and approving a subsequent appropriation in the amount of five million dollars from unappropriate monies in the general fund one oh one to transfer expense account one oh one point nine fifty point fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine. Mr. Quinzel did explain this to us during our, uh, agenda meeting, but since we've got a bit of a crowd here, this is a big chunk of money, so if you would not mind, uh, sharing that again.
Okay, absolutely, so this money is not leaving the general fund yet. This, when we record transfers from the general fund to other funds within the city, we have to run them through this expense account. So in other words, when, when, uh, in another ordinance where we say we're going to, to take unappropriated money from the general fund and transfer it to, you know, the fleet expense, you know, the, the fleet fund and fleet expense account, those monies are not appropriated until, you know, of course, you all take action. But this is what records those monies going from the general fund to those other funds. So we have end of month transfers that go on every single month. Uh, there's probably six to eight of those that happen, uh, each month. And then, like I said, anytime we take monies, unappropriated monies from the general fund and move them elsewhere, this is the pathway that they take. So we, we budgeted so much money, uh, I can't remember the dollar amount right now, but use three million dollars as a figure that we, um, put in the budget that was based on activity last year. Our revenues have been significantly higher this year, so those end of month transfers that take, that basically live off of a percentage of the general fund have also been higher. So, and then we, you know, we're purchasing a new dump truck, that's a quarter million dollar expense right out of the gate. So all of those transfers to those funds where we will spend out of get recorded in this particular transfer expense account.
Appreciate that. So I would take a motion? Ms. Elmore?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce fifty-three, ordinance fifty-three, twenty-twenty-five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, did you want to?
Second.
That'd be great. So Ms. Elmore has made a motion, second by Mr. Brown to introduce ordinance fifty-three, twenty-twenty-five and for the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Brown, any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-three, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. We now have ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the evidence set aside fund two forty-five to the law enforcement trust fund two forty-one and making a subsequent appropriation in the amount of eighty thousand dollars from unappropriate funds to the law enforcement trust fund two forty-one to the law enforcement trust fund expense account two forty-one point zero 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 point fifty thousand.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-five and for the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. Resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Authorizing the mayor to accept a grant from Franklin County Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harcar to introduce resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five and for the suspension of all rules, any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call Roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harcar, for the adoption of resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Any discussion? Ms. Song, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation this evening is resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to accept an Office of Criminal Justice service grant.
Mr. President, we should introduce resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore, to introduce resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, that is, I did miss, I wanted to update, that was for the expansion of our flock cameras, not related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, it's a public safety issue under Councilman Morrison's committee to expand our license plate readers. So, just to add a few new points.
Appreciate that, because that's been very, the flock systems are very successful.
It's been very successful.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Ms. Song, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Elmore. Is there any discussion? Ms. Song, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public of the evening. Same rules apply. You need to sign in, state your name, three minutes, and you cannot talk on the same subject that you talked in the first poll public.
Good evening, all of council. I'm Diane Peters, and I want to tell you something that I'm planning on doing in hopes that you guys could do it also, or perhaps someone who is listening can maybe do it. As far as the homeless teens and what they need, I've decided to do a subscription with Amazon that every two months, three months, you can spread it out however you want, to deliver toilet paper and/or paper towels to the facility. So, I like that idea, so I'm just putting it out there. If anybody else would like to champion that cause, to help these kids, can you imagine being a teenager and homeless? I can't. So, hopefully, someone who's hearing this out in the audience or in the tape will think it's a good idea and maybe do it also. Thank you.
Mr. President, I know it doesn't go with the rules, but may I ask Ms. Peters a question?
Yes.
So, when you say you're intending to have paper towels delivered to you.
No, not to me.
Right.
To the center.
To the center.
To the center.
Through Amazon, to the center.
Correct.
And so, I can set up subscriptions to different places if you want.
Okay. So, are you asking citizens for some sort of monetary help in that?
No.
No, she's asked them to also mimic what she is doing.
Or mimic.
I am sharing an ideal that I think is a good ideal that it's.
That they can set up independently on their own.
Yeah. And it's easy to do, and you don't have to think about it, just know to take fifteen dollars out of your budget every two months or whatever. Some people worry about that, though. That's all you have to do, and it's automatic, and it benefits the kids.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peters.
Man Waller?
Yes.
I just wanted to lend my support to a couple of the issues that the gentlemen from the, representing the towing companies spoke on a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if any of you have ever had your vehicle towed, but I have, and it's a fairly terrible experience to have to deal with and go through. I was new to the area, didn't have any family here, you know, single, living alone, and so, you know, you're already stranded and forced to have to go pay to get your vehicle back from, you know, thirty minutes out of the city or whatever, and then on top of that, you have to pay for a taxi that far to get there or whatever, and it just sucks. So, I think it would make, you know, things a little easier potentially on the citizens of the city or those visiting if you required in the contract to, to have like a radius, an allowable radius that companies would have to be within, close to Whitehall to be, you know, contracted to do towing, right? And I know other municipalities have things for either five miles or eight miles out of the city or whatever, but it would prevent, you know, the vehicle being towed to Dublin and, you know, somebody having to go there to get it back. And then similarly, I think that, I'm not entirely sure what your contract has now, but he mentioned certifications and various like standards to meet, I guess, for the towing companies as well, and I think a lot of those, or some of those, would certainly help like, also make it safer and easier for the citizens to get their vehicles back, because, you know, if they have to have a person there, you know, manning it at all times, and they have to have certain security features in the lots, and they, that just makes it easier and safer for people to go get their vehicles as well. So, I think a couple of things, if you are redoing the contracts or editing them, a couple of things might be useful to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward? Seeing no one, I will move on to community day board. Yes, Ms. Heck.
I don't really have much, camp is going on, Parks and Rec, it started this week, is through the whole month of June, you can still sign up. They are doing summer meals at the high school as well as K Avenue Elementary. It's from eleven to twelve, you have to eat on site, and it's for children, one ages, starting one years old and up, but it is just for children, and they do Monday through Thursday. The high school is all the month of June, and then K Avenue is all the month of June and most of the month of July.
Ms. Harcar, you knew you were coming next.
There will be a parade soon on July fourth. The fireworks on July third.
Yes.
And everybody get here. Risk bands will be here before you know it. Fishing, yep, fishing was mentioned.
I'll join the club. There's also, and I'll have to get like further details out, excuse me, so that people can see it, but it's my understanding that there's going to be a Wetlands community event this Saturday at twelve o'clock at Whitehall Community Park. They're going to be studying macro, some, you got it? Okay, maybe, all right, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Heck.
No, I don't know, no.
No pressure.
I don't think, I don't, I don't, I know it's somewhere, it's too much pressure, I can't pull over.
I'm sure it'll be on the city's website.
But I'm sure it's on the city's website, Parks and Rec. I'll, I'll ask them to maybe post it on their Facebook page.
Twelve o'clock this Saturday.
You're right about that.
Can you say that again?
The Wetlands event? They didn't hear the details for Saturday.
Oh, so there's a Wetlands, there should be a Wetlands event. Parks and Rec is hosting it. I will ask them to repost it on their Facebook page or on their website, because we don't have the details. But it is on Saturday.
All I, yeah, all I know is twelve o'clock, Saturday, Whitehall Community Park.
Yeah.
I have a question, if I may, regarding the fireworks. I know that in the past, we've gotten the opportunity guide, and in that, or tickets, I don't think that I received an opportunity guide, so I don't know if it was just me or others didn't get it, but how we're going about getting those passes. Does anyone know?
So, my understanding, opportunity guides did not go out this year. They were available for pickup at State of the City and at City Hall. There were small quantities that were available at City Hall. It's also on our website, and it's a PDF. You can literally like flip through the pages, it's an interactive on our website. As for fireworks tickets, there will be risk bands available at City Hall, and if you live in the city, your ID will always help get you in as a ticket if you do not get a risk band.
Risk bands available at any time before then or just that day?
I'm not sure when they're coming.
June.
What is it?
June sixteenth. Those will be available at City Hall.
Here at City Hall.
And whereabouts at City Hall would they pick those up?
Building Service Department.
Okay, thank you.
In the clerk's office.
In the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll now move on to poll council. Ms. Heck, you are first up this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody that came in, everybody that's watching from home. Thank you to everybody that spoke. Even though I speak every week, it's not easy, so I commend you for getting up and speaking. Thank you to the mayor for the proclamation. I think that is really important that we do that, and that's all I really have. I hope everybody's having a good start to their summer.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to those that are here this evening and watching from home. Thank you, Mayor, for the Pride Month proclamation. Feeling seen is really important, especially these days. Congratulations to our new director of economic development, Jackie Russell. Did I get that right? Okay. I look forward to seeing your face around here a lot more. And that's all I have.
If that, I thank you. Ms. Harcar?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to thank Director Rollins, thank you for the update on the flags. There were some questions about what, you know, what has been changing on Yearling Road. I know there was concerns about flags not being up for Memorial Day, but I also know Tuesday morning at nine AM, I was stuck in a little bit of traffic on Yearling Road watching the huge saw rip the road apart and was observing that as well. So, I think your points on what's been going on with the flags is very helpful, so thank you for that update. I did also want to thank the mayor for including me in the Strive for Youth event. Being able to meet Major John Turnbull was quite, quite amazing. He did have such a wonderful sense of humor after such a horrific event, and just really appreciated the time to get to meet with him and a couple of the other veterans that were there. Wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, and thankfully, we didn't have to face anybody off in kickball, so we got out of that one. I want to give a shout-out too, to Parks and Recs for pulling together the very soggy summer kickoff on Friday. I was watching the weather all day, and they did not cancel it. If you were not there, I know some of you I got to see there. There was a wonderful food giveaway. I saw people leaving with boxes of fresh produce and groceries, and I just think that that was such, I, I mean, I love to touch a truck, and I love getting to see the vendors and stuff, but I just, I love that we, not we, because I can't take credit for it. I love that they did that for the community to make sure that we do help with food security, because it is a huge issue. There's been a lot, I feel like, in the last week. I did get to listen to Commissioner Crowley's presentation. I wasn't able to attend that day, but I did listen to that, and I just was really, you know, amazed by how open and honest she was about experiences that she's had. So, welcome to Jackie. I feel like we're probably going to be over. I'd love to go to volleyball at the senior center. I really am hoping to make that, but now I'm a little more intimidated that you all have T-shirts, and I don't feel quite prepared. I'm going to need to get coordinated for that, so. And thank you, Mrs. Peters, for your idea to help the homeless youth. I think that's amazing, and I appreciate you doing that. Dr. Waller, I always appreciate your feedback and your information about the towing companies, and I have been towed and helped people that have been towed before, so I know that that is a challenge. Other than that, happy pride. I think that is everything that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to everyone for coming out this evening here in person, and of course, those watching from home now and or later. I'd like to thank the mayor for his proclamation on Pride Month. I would like to say thank you to Ms. Rollins for the, and the administration for the banners, the poll banners, and I think it's a very good idea. I mean, you know, a lot of different things can be troublesome or messy or, you know, and all that, so I understand that it's a nice, efficient way to honor things and get them up and not have such a big fuss as, as has been in the past. Welcome to Ms. Russell. I look forward to meeting with you and having a conversation as soon as you get yourself all settled. Welcome to Whitehall. I would like to thank Ms. Balzer for her comments regarding the referendum and the effort it took. You know, I respect the process, I respect your rights, and I respect your prodigious I respect your rights, and I respect your prodigious efforts, those that all took part in that, in what you did. As a citizen, as a councilperson, I respect all of that. That, that's where my priority lies with that. Thank you to Dr. Waller for her always kind and thoughtful consideration she brings to us. Ms. Stein, amazing stuff you bring to us, and of course, it clearly shows that you're doing homework and, and working on what you feel passionate about, and indeed, we see the results of that. And I appreciate that as someone who also had a lot of passion and stood in front of this council for years, expressing that. Ms. Peters, as always, thank you for coming in and, and sharing that piece of information and the kindness and consideration in, in doing so. I want to say, and I don't know how many folks out there know this, but the meadow that's going up on Doni Street, I, I've not heard anything from, I mean officially, from the city. But there is a meadow on Doni Street, right by the bridge, that has been planted by the city, and it's growing. I look at it and watch its growth every day. Very excited about it. I think it's a lovely addition to the community, and so, thank you for that. I think it's gonna be very beautiful. You know, there's a lot to say regarding tonight's vote and the situation with reconsideration, everything. But at this moment in time, I just, there's a lot of thoughts running through my head, and I just don't feel comfortable trying to put them out in a cohesive manner right now. So I'll leave that where it is. It's Pride Month, I'm a gay man, as you've all heard. So, I feel that it is my, not just duty, but that I have something to say about it, indeed I do. One thing is, is, you know, last year during the situation with the Pride crosswalks, there were comments online that said that people are tired of gayness, or being gay, or pride, or whatever, being shoved down people's throats. And I, there's a quote that I have here, in a book I keep of quotes that I appreciate. There was a book by the, a gentleman by the name Bruce Bower, B-A-W-E-R, and it was called A Place at the Table. And it talked about various aspects of the LGBTQ plus community trying to find their place, being allowed to sit at the table of America, which of course, they have a right to. But here's a quote, and it has to do with that attitude of, I'm tired of you shoving this in my face. Quote, "Many heterosexuals gripe that they're sick of hearing so much about homosexuality. In a twist on the famous line in which Lord Alfred Douglas described homosexuality as, quote, 'the love that dare not speak its name', some have complained in recent years that homosexuality has turned into the love that won't shut up. During a recent talk show confrontation about the subject, for example, a heterosexual man argued that for gays to talk about homosexuality constituted, quote unquote, 'straight bashing'. After all, he said, I don't go around talking about being straight. Such a man simply doesn't realize how wrong he is and how unfair. As Joseph Stefan has noted, the public expression of heterosexuality is such an integral and basic part of our everyday lives that it goes unrecognized. The proper response to the man who complained of straight bashing is that he, quote unquote, talks about being straight all the time without realizing it. He does so every time he mentions his wife, every time he tells a joke about marriage, every time he banthers blatantly with a waitress or female secretary. Indeed, from the homosexual point of view, the love that won't shut up is heterosexuality. And the major reason why anti-gay prejudice endures, I think, is that homosexuality, despite all the discussion of it that has taken place on certain issues-oriented TV and radio shows, maintains an extremely low profile in both popular culture and everyday life, end quote. And so, I leave you with this quote that I found just recently from James Baldwin, a great author. And he said, it took me, he said, "It took many years of vomiting of all the filth I'd been taught about myself and half-believed before I was able to walk on the earth as though I had a right to be here." That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to everyone who came out this evening. Thank you to everyone who's watching online. At first, I'd like to thank or welcome Ms. Russell from myself and Ms. Heck. I think she wanted to love you as well.
Thank you so much. I feel really bad, I'm sorry.
Welcome. I'd like to thank the mayor for the update on the environmental impact of the spill and everything that's going on with that. I appreciate all the hard work and efforts that it seems are going into that to remediate the issue, so. I'd also like to thank everyone involved for being able to facilitate the conversation with Commissioner Crowley. Being able to, I wasn't able to make it, but being able to listen to her story as well as the mayor's, both of your openness to, you know, your life experiences and how they helped you to lead today was inspiring, so I appreciate that. I'm also excited to, you know, be able to attend the Fishing with Dads event. I like to fish a little bit, but I think even more important than that, you know, building community and camaraderie between people. You know, as someone who grew up without a dad, I think it's important to be able to build that type of environment for, for young folks. So I'm really looking forward to that. I would also like to thank Parks and Rec and everyone else involved. The city, Discover, for the summer kickoff last week. You know, it doesn't surprise me at all that even though there was some adversity, you know, the department was able to pick up the ball and, and really make things still work out and be successful. I had a great time, and, you know, I really want to thank Discover for, you know, this is the second year that I've gone out to this event. And what they do for the community is incredible, and all the representatives have been just great people to talk to and interact with. So, looking forward to those events continuing, so. I'd also just like to thank the city attorney for clearing up any issues. Bless you.
Thank you, sorry.
With the, with the reconsideration, I know that there were a lot of questions from the beginning. You know, I had residents reach out to me, and, you know, I let them know, hey, look, as soon as we know, you know, what the issues are, or, you know, how we can move forward with this, I was confident that if we didn't step in the right direction, that we would, you know, take care of that, which we did. So, thank you for clearing that up today. I'd also just like to end on this, so folks were interested after my comments in the last poll council, and asked if I could facilitate a conversation about some of the things that I learned during my time in Denver at the ULI conference. So, I'd like to invite the public to join me next week, Thursday the twelfth, at the Whitehall Library in Meeting Room Four, to discuss again what I learned at this conference. The Urban Land Institute, or ULI, is a global organization, and their mission is to shape the future of the built environment for transformative impact on communities worldwide. So I'm, my big takeaway from the conference in and of itself is that communities all over this country and the world, you know, from people that I heard from there, are facing similar, bless you, are facing similar issues. And although the degrees may vary, oftentimes, the solutions can be shared. So, I would just like to share more about what I learned there, share some of, you know, what I saw during my tours of Denver, the Colorado Springs and Boulder, and talk about some things like sustainable development and resiliency. So again, that'll be next week, next Thursday, the twelfth, at the Whitehall Library in Meeting Room Four. And that's, sorry, I don't know if I said the time, but that's from five to six PM that I'll be hosting them, so. Would love to see you all show up, so that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Sure, thanks.
Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to first of all, start by thanking our residents, their participation in what, and that's what helps communities stay informed and the input that's provided. It helps us all. Also, I want to thank those that are viewing, those that are here. There's a lot to be thankful for. Also, thank you, President, for, I mean, Mayor, for the Pride Month proclamation, theme being reflect, unite, and empower. And that theme can go across every proclamation, I believe, that you enacted, because a reflection to unite and empower should be something that we, a central theme throughout, throughout the entire proclamations that are given. I want to thank, excuse me, welcome Jackie Russell. You'll love it here, and there's a lot of work to be done. So congratulations, and pull up your sleeves and get ready to get to work. Also, the environmental issue, I've had people ask me about that, so thank you, Mayor, for giving an exhaustive insight into everything that goes into that and the process and where we are and what's needed in the future. The Fishing with Dad, you have so many initiatives moving forward. Just appreciative to the out-of-the-box thinking, the involvement in community, and to bringing new things to light for this community. The donation for the homeless youth, I will be donating for that. And the Strive for You for Disabled Veterans. I don't think there's enough programming for disabled veterans and those that have served our country. And in my opinion, that's one of the things we should really put our money and our efforts behind, because they, they make a difference in us being who we are. Thank you for all those that have come before poll council. Your information is considered, the way you project and, and move with regards to how you feel about different initiatives and different issues. Don't go on, or fall on deaf ears, we do hear that. And so I just want to thank you for just coming forward and, and making that a part of this whole, what we call, community. Thank you, Casey, for pivoting in a new direction regarding how we, our banners and that sort of thing, because there are other communities doing that, and that'll cut down on vandalism and some other things that happen. So, thank you for being insightful in that area. Ms. Peters, if I joined the Senior Center, can I get a T-shirt?
For people that are not a member, it's ten dollars.
Okay, okay. Okay. But I'm gonna have to sharpen up on my volleyball, because.
Well, when you get older, you know, you. You get a free t-shirt when you get older, but you're not here yet.
Okay.
Come anytime.
I don't know. Also, I want to, I want to thank Ms. Counselor Dixon for his words. Tired of showing, tired of shoving this in our faces. And I'm sure that when James Baldwin wrote that, it was probably twofold, being African-American and, I don't know if he came out and said that he was.
He was gay.
Okay, I knew he was, you know, I don't like to question people if they don't come out and say it. But anyway, thank you for those, those words. And my motto is always, love God and love people, because at the end of the day, we are all human. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome Ms. Russell. Look forward to working, working with you. And I would like to thank Counselors Heck, Smith, Harcar, Dixon, Brown, Elmore for all their comments. I have nothing to add. You've done an excellent job up there. Everyone have a safe week.
Thank you. Just a few things, again, this has been hit, so I'll make it brief. Like to make, like the mayor for the proclamation, very well done. I think it's definitely important that that's out there, and I really appreciate you recognizing that. I'd feel like to welcome Ms. Russell. I just had the opportunity to sit on two meetings with her today, and for just being freshened in her position with Whitehall. She jumped right in and was very impressed with her, and she's got a lot on her plate to pick from a fire hose, as I was teasing with her earlier. But I'm very impressed with what I've seen so far, and please know you've got the support of this council. Whatever we can do to help you, we are there to do it. So, we're all, all got the same common goal. The other thing, and Ms. Rollins, you and I have been in conversation today. Main Street, I believe you said paving starts Thursday?
Yes.
Hooray.
Yeah.
So, do you know how long that will take approximately?
Oh, maybe two days. It's gonna be quick, yeah.
So, that, that nightmare will be behind us, and just leave us with.
By Monday, we will have beautiful.
Now, of course, as that nightmare goes away, we pick up the nightmare of Yearling.
Yes.
And Broad Street will be with us, but one step at a time, it is with the infrastructure, so.
Broad Street case two should be done in the next week or so. Coonler and Sigmund also done in the next week, so things are wrapping up, but unfortunately, Yearling is still undone.
Right, and, and when will Broad Street start back up?
Probably mid-July.
Mid-July, okay, very good. And with that, I've got nothing additional for this council, and with that said, I will adjourn us at eight eighteen.